If you all stand, Mr. Chester, would you please say this word of prayer before we start?
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this group of people who gather each time to just to do the work of this community. I pray that you would just give them wisdom and understanding to bring prosperity, success, justice, but also unity to this community in their decisions. I pray, oh God, that you be with those who stand today. May they get, may you give them just other words to speak. And we pray that you just bless this community in every way. We ask these things in your Son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Call us lead, you pay county commissioners to order, we'll pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additional corrections to the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Second.
Been moved in second, and all favors say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mr. Cohen, you're first on the agenda today.
It's only had too much. We've just been chip sealing. And then I got the brush cutter back out and going. The windows got busted out over here ways back down at the school. Got it finally out. Chip sealing, as far as that goes, we've got 31 miles done so far. Got them all basically patched and doing some other things catching up today because we had rain coming in. Get back on chip again Thursday if the weather helps us. And the last mile, 450 west, it's now asphalt. Had that taken care of, too.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Warren? Michael's supposed to be on first, but that's okay.
I don't see him. I said I don't see him.
You don't see Michael?
No. That guy right behind you.
Oh, really? Well, I'm blind. How could I miss that?
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
Okay. What I got today is a contract between Indoc and Fayette County for design of Bridge 90 on Marley Road. So it's for about $170,000 in federal funds. Total cost is about $212,000 for design, and this is over three or four years. And so this is between Indoc and Fayette County to get the money. We pay upfront and get reimbursed for the design. So I have two.
We have sufficient funds in our Kibbit Bridge Fund, then I hope.
Yeah, we should have some left. I put some in the budget for next year. I think about $75,000. That's probably over. But so over four years, it'd be like, you know, $50,000. So, and I may transfer some money from Bridge 25 for this year in case we get billed for some work this year. But I did, you know, they may. After you sign the contract, I sent it in. It takes six weeks for the state to sign everything, state attorney general's office, and then I can give a notice of receipt to the design consultant to start. So they won't have much done this year, I think. There may not even be any bills this year, I don't know. But I'll have some money transferred to just cover this year's. And I think we'll, I'll give you this.
We're at the signature stage then, or?
Yeah, they've already signed it. No, you have to sign it, and then I send it to Indoc. And they sent it through the attorney general's office, state, and.
To make sure it's legal and all that good stuff.
And then send this copy back. Yeah, right here's the signature page. I've given the copy to county attorney to look over since she's not familiar. It's just boilerplate, usual.
Yeah.
And it probably, if you want to do it now, but it's on that page, and they like blue ink.
Do we have to have a motion signed? That's what I was wondering. Is, has there been a motion to enter into the contract, or?
We've already approved Butler Corman as the.
The design engineer.
Yeah.
But this is, this is to enter into a contract with the state, correct?
Yeah. So how it's administered and getting the funds mainly covers the state in case of default by the county?
I would make a motion that we approve this contract with Indoc pending approval of our attorneys reading over.
I'll second the motion.
So I'll get it back from Jane when you sign it.
Okay. I don't know if there's a blue pen.
Yeah, I bring one spatial.
Well, in that case, let's just go ahead and sign it down.
Just two copies?
Yeah, I have to send one original to the state.
Okay. It's been moved in second and approved of this contract. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
This gotta be the blue pen?
Yes. That was the engineer's contract. So I had one copy. They sent this back.
Something printed in there.
Yeah, because they were painting.
That was real.
So they need that figure. Then they come back. This comes from.
Oh, wow, that'll be our copy.
Okay.
They better like it.
Okay.
Got all three?
Yep.
All ready?
Yeah.
Jane has signed. The test.
Okay. Well, you have to keep this one. Jane doesn't sign it, black ink. Maybe we do a lot of that.
Okay.
Do you have your blue pen, sir?
Yeah. And I went out with Jim Reese to Bridge 25 yesterday, and they're about ready to take the sheet piling out and be out of the water. So we work on the side rails, spander walls. Get ready to put the arches, the rest of the arches, the metal arches, and then they put the concrete arches out. So I don't know how much water they got last night, so.
I don't know. Jim's sitting there.
Oh, okay. He snuck in on us. So, yeah. So we looked at it, and it's come along really well. I think they'll get done by middle of the week.
I appreciate the pictures and the updates you've been sending. Thank you. I've been forwarding them on to Kim Bodell, and she's real excited about seeing what's going on.
Yeah, I had a meeting last week in Greenfield.
Yes.
With Kim Bodell, you know, Indoc crew. And they're pretty happy. So far, I'm getting change orders, although I was expecting maybe one or two change orders coming up.
On Bridge 25?
Yeah, backfill problem. And then the piers, some of them went deeper than planned. So it'd be, they're both wouldn't be too much, but we'll see.
So they're going to want more money, surprise or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Waiting for, get the final compaction in and all the backfill on.
I'm just glad that the government decided to pay for 80% of all of it, including the matching.
Well, let's say the.
Preservation.
There's no work out there.
Milestone said that they plan to be in for paving middle of this month.
I thought they were going to start the first month.
Well, I emailed and find out if that's, they've got until October the 1st to get it done. So I expect it to be two or three weeks to do all the paving. But their schedule, you know, weather and everything, they said it'd be the middle of August they plan on right now being here.
Well, that's not too far away.
No.
That's about a week away, so.
Yeah. So we get started on that. But I don't know where they're going to start, you know. They may not know. And Richard at the highway department, he was supposed to get some pipe in on Elephant Hill intersection at 200 North. So we have to get that taken care of before they pave that intersection.
Yeah.
So, but they should get done by middle of next week. Milestone said they'd work around it, you know, do the other sections first.
Well, I can start off on our plan of road. I expect to hear lots of complaints when that one goes up.
Yeah, well, there'll be flaggers, maintenance of traffic, and, you know, slow down. It won't be closed.
They're not going to close it at all?
No, they'll probably just, like last year. Yeah, do one side, all half flagmen and.
Your turn, my turn?
Yeah, they'll be slow, so.
Well, at least, at least they'll be able to get to their houses and get to the big city.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's all I have today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Warren.
Michael?
Okay, I've got a number of things this morning. One's my monthly report. I don't really see a point in going through it too closely there, but had 219 tickets for us for the month. Can still see where it's still mostly county. Email blocks, we had 96,000 emails for the month and 13,000 blocked. It's still kind of hashing out as the new firewall, spam filter learns the spam that we've got, so that I expect that number to go up. And this one also doesn't count email spam that where it doesn't exist as an address anymore, where it's trying to route it to somebody that doesn't exist. So there's that. The V I S digital contract that I gave to the attorney and copies for all of your last meeting, I wanted to see if we could get that signed. I didn't give you new copies of it. It's from the last meeting where I had to give it to the attorney to check out. Did that all look okay or? Okay. So if we can get that signed today, it's for that service contract that came with our Superior Court DCR that we already have purchased. So just need to get a motion to get that signed.
That's a service contract, Michael?
Yeah, it's the service contract. I think we get it for a year, basically just for purchasing the, yeah, start date April 17th, 2018, end date April 16th, 2019.
I'd move that we approve that service contract. I'll second the motion.
Been moved in second, and all favors say aye. Three ayes.
And if we decide to renew that yet next year, it says the annual cost is $1,200, so. There's the copy that we need to get signed. Just wanted to add that to Jane. Okay, so next thing is Craig Pennington is coming in as the drug court officer. He needs a computer that he can take with him out in the field. That's that first paperclip set of quotes there. The lowest quote I got was from PCMG for $1,620. This is a Surface Book 2, so it's basically a very small, light laptop slash tablet. So it also works as a full desktop, so it's not like a normal tablet where you're giving up capability for the tablet function where it doesn't work as well as a regular computer. So this will be his office computer, his out on the go computer and everything. So.
Is the judge's grant that will pay for this?
Yes, the judge's grant pays for this. He's got the money for it, so I think he said he had four grants from the state for equipment and everything, so.
Mike, how does that work, the new startup grants? Do they have to have appropriations approved to the council first, or for expenditures, or?
That's a good question. Kind of leaning towards yes, but I'm 100% Jane, we bumped off you.
I know normally when we get grants, Diana tells us what to go into the computer and put in for their budgets, and that's what we do. So I don't know if they're considered appropriated when the grants are approved. I don't remember coming for additional.
I mean, I don't want, I don't want us to obligate the council.
Right, no.
If it has to be appropriated first.
Yes, I think once they approve the grants, that money's considered appropriated, is how we.
I would agree that once it's approved, that they can use those monies for whatever they see fit. So it falls within those guidelines.
All right, all right. I just wanted to make sure we didn't obligate the council for some to do so.
Because it's grant money, so.
Okay. Approve the purchase of the computer.
I'll second that. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Been moved in second and approved.
Okay, so the next quote that I've got there is for CASA. Again, it's coming from their grant funds, so they've got this. They want to get some tablets. They have to use the money or lose it, and they're going to get some tablets to be used in their office for, basically to distract kids. If there are kids in there that need to be, and they can put games on them, they can put books on them, whatever, hand it to the kid. And then while they're dealing with the parent or whatever else is going on, they've got something to distract the child with. So the quotes are not apples to apples, because IT Savvy and PCMG did not quote the same cases. But even with the Kindle fires from IT Savvy were 151, the Kindle fires from Amazon were 142. So just on those, we're saving $10 apiece. The cases are $10, $50 cheaper apiece. The only thing they were cheaper on was on the Wi-Fi router, which I could still get from them, and that was $70 cheaper, assuming that it's the same SKU, and I don't know if it is or not. One comes with a power supply, the other one doesn't. So I don't know if that's a $70 value or not. I don't think it's worth $70, but if I can get one for 20 plus the 127, I can get that from them cheaper. But I just wanted to get approval for this purchase. Again, this is coming from their grant funds. And if they don't use them, I think it's actually by the end of the month, I think they'll lose them for the year for this equipment.
I'd move that we approve the purchase. In second?
Been moved in second, and all favors say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay, only two more quick things. We got rid of three of the old copiers that were stashed in the building. I think we've got three more left here in this building, two more in the annex, and I think like five or six in the basement of the jail. So we are getting rid of those as corrections has time for people doing community service. I would also like to get approval to get rid of some of the old printers that we've got downstairs in the basement. We've got 15 printers that are down there that could be gotten rid of. I just want to get approval to get rid of those. I don't see any value in trying to auction them, just because I don't see anybody buying them for parts unless they were really desperate. But then we've got to deal with shipping them and all the other stuff that goes along with that, so.
Let's see, do you read anything you can get rid of down there?
Okay.
All right, I, I would move to approve. Okay, I'll second that.
Been moved in second and approved. Get rid of any unusable.
Unvalued.
No value equipment.
Hey, Gary, there used to be a robotics club in town. I don't know if they still have it or not, but they would use that kind of stuff to harvest control boards or motors or whatever for the kids. I don't know if that's something that's possible, if you're just going to ditch them.
Yeah, I just take them out to the transfer station to Tom Creek.
We might want to check to see if robotics club might want them.
Sure. I don't know what the transfer station does with them, so it's possible they could go out to the transfer station, because when we took out those copiers and some other stuff the other day, they had TVs and a whole bunch of stuff that had boards, so we'll see if we can get a hold of them, I guess. I mean, it's fine with me.
Do you have a contact number, Mike?
I used to, I can check with the person that used to do it and see if, I think it went away for a little bit, but I thought they were trying to bring it back, so.
Okay. If they can use it, great.
Yeah, it really depends, too, on the availability of community corrections to have time, so it's not like it's going to happen tomorrow kind of thing, so. And then the final thing is I have vacation that I have yet to use, so I would just like to get approval to be able to be on vacation and have Mike cover from the 23rd to the 29th, just like I did last, or sometime in July. So there's no problem with that, and then I'll plan for that. Any questions or anything for me? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is Bill McDaniel hiding here someplace?
Just don't ask Warren.
Huh? And I also have Paul Freed is supposed to be here with the 144. Is he behind the podium there someplace? No? Okay. He snooze, he lose. Do we have any mail? Old business? New business, Miss Kidd?
Good morning, Debbie. I kind of want to give you a summary of what I've been working on as far as the discrepancies for the treasurer from 2011 to 2016. I had kind of heard it been said that, well, I don't know what the big deal is because there were findings for every year, and the State Board of Accounts was okay with that or seemed to be okay with that. So I just kind of wanted to give a review of it. The discrepancies date back in the treasurer's cashbook, not reconciling to the bank balances. Now, the fortunate thing was, was that the cash was long. There was more money in the bank than there is in the, on the treasurer's cashbook. And the treasurer's cashbook is a daily record that it has charges on one side and credits on the other. And the treasurer enters the property taxes collected for that day, B and B excises, all those kind of things that have, are waiting to have a settlement until you settle on those monies. And then the bottom of it has a list of the prior days, funds ledger, and money received by quietas for that day and money dispersed by warrants or checks for that day. So in doing that, in looking at that, when State Board of Accounts comes in to do an audit, they go to the bank and they pull, they pull the statements themselves. They ask for what the end of the year balances are, and then they start comparing that to the treasurer's cashbook. And that's where it ran into an issue. So effective July 1 of 2017, which you know, their Indiana Code 5-11-5-1.5 went into effect that requires entities audited by the State Board of Accounts to submit a corrective action plan for any compliance issues that have been repeated from prior reports. Well, these issues were repeated back to 2011. I left office the end of 2010. So to that end, I entered into a contract with the commissioners and to look at the records from 2011 to 2016. We were already kind of a month in the corrective action plan. That date started ticking, the date of the exit interview with State Board of Accounts. So when I got involved, we were already a month down. So instead of having six months to look at that, I had five months. And I was not entirely sure it could be done in that length of time. So, and Levonda Glover, the current treasurer's been very, she's been very good about getting me anything I need quickly. And so I just, I'll go in and scoop up a gear and I'll bring it home, and I've done all this work at home. I have yet to, I wanted to wait until I did my final report and we had the final action on what's, how to correct some of these things before I heard the records back, that they're going to come back. So my methodology for reviewing the six years of treasurer records was I did a daily summary of cashbook deposits and warrants. And that summary identified on one side of the page, I would have the cashbook activity daily, which showed the deposits, and then I had the checks written, and I carried a running balance. And then on the other side, I would have the bank statement. I would enter in all of the B and B deposits that were made to the account, all of the credit cards that were made, and then they began to have health credit cards. Those were added in. And then all of the money that comes in through E F Ts where the state gives the county money. And I put those down and then identified those, and then I got to compare it. Then I took that, a monthly reconciliation of checking accounts. We started out with one checking account, and Mary Hires, former auditor, we had started to have some fraudulent activity on that account where there had been checks presented for payment that were fake checks. And that actually ended up in full-blown fraud where, and US Bank was very good at catching everything, and the county was made whole every month. So she, Mary opened a second checking account, and then that went into use in April of 2013 is when we started writing checks from that account. So I reconciled the two checking accounts. I identified deposits that were not posted to the cashbook or were posted incorrectly. And then I did a monthly comparison of money market accounts that the county has several of, and that way I could identify how the interest was being posted and identify money in and out of those accounts. My summary of discrepancies, and I have kind of added this together from both of the checking account reconciliations, and it totaled $39,436.50. And you'll see the bulk of it was $43,692 in B and B and boat excise tax that was not posted to the cashbook. Now, that may, we, we're going to have to ask, and I talked to Jane about this, we're going to have to ask State Board of Accounts how we need to handle some of these transactions, because these date back to 2011, and you've settled on those monies between then. And they may want to do a special disbursement of those funds separately from the, from the other dispersals, which I would imagine they would want to do. So even though we found that $43,692, that may not be all of the county's money, because it would have to go through the settlement process where it gets distributed to all of the taxing entities. I found $7,000 in errors in posting, which is going to add additional $7,000. So now we're at $50,000 in B and B excise tax that wasn't, wasn't posted or was incorrect. I had, and this happened in 2016, I think, I had a daily deposit that was posted twice. It was posted, and the second time it was posted, it was posted. It was posted, and the second time it was posted, it was posted as excise tax. So, that has to come off of there. So, we're taking that $50,000, you know, we're reducing it down. The 2011 correction, some of that dates back to the issues that we had early on in 2011 that were identified in the audit report with a retainage account that was not handled That account should have, when you enter into retainage contract with contractor, they typically want you to, you're both signatory to the money, so basically the money should never have been carried on the treasurer's book. It should have been the contractor and the treasurer should have went to a local bank, opened an account, whenever checks were cut for the contract work, then the 10% retainage should have been cut, a separate check cut, that check went down and put in that bank account that was not carried on the county's books. Then at the end, when commissioners were approved, the work to be done, you know, that retainage, just so you got a little bit to call back in case they don't complete things that need to be done. So, then at that point, that money would have been released. So, that finally got itself ironed out in 2012. Then various other things that I've listed there. For some reason, the bank deposited $179.63 in deposit slips. We should have cut a check for supplies and made it out and deposited to the bank to make that whole. We've had several return direct deposits, and I've been working with Jane on a couple of those. And so, anyway, then at the end of 2016, I had $35,000 and change in EFT deposits that were later rectified with postings to the January 17 cashbook when Lavanda took over. Additional findings, I went over the retainage account. Here's the thing that reconciliation of the bank statements to the cashbook was only completed that I could find for the first few months of 2011, and then never, I don't see any attempt at doing that again. And I have this in yellow, because I can't stress this enough, the monthly reconciliations would have identified discrepancies on a monthly basis and resulted in clean audits with no repeat findings and me not standing here talking to you. Seven checks, and actually, I thought about that this morning, there was an eighth check in the old checking account for $700 that was voided, that was never added back in, I just kept manually adjusting the outstanding checks. But there were seven checks totaling $7,900. I have given that information to Lisa in the treasurer's office, so she has cleared those on the reconciliation. There was a carryforward discrepancy of $5,400 plus and minus in both the checking accounts. For some reason, it looks like maybe, maybe the day's work wasn't saved and went back to create, and fifty, that exact amount was the amount of the deposit to the one account, so basically, he picked, it flipped it. We put, it was put in the old account instead of being put in the new account, so that's just an easy correction, plus and minus on the book. November and December interest on the money market accounts was not posted in the cashbook. Wouldn't have had December interest, you wouldn't have had those statements from the bank as of the time that Mary left office. My recommendations, and I put all of this in bold, and I can't stress it enough, adhere to the monthly reconciliations per Indiana Code, which says that all investment officers shall reconcile at least monthly the balances of public funds. And that protects them, that protects you. The second is, complete the monthly financial report. The monthly financial report, I think it had been done for maybe, looked like a few months, the first few months where the attempted reconciliations were made, but then never again. And the monthly financial report, that's done, that dovetails in, as soon as you get done with your reconciliation, do your monthly financial report. And then it's done in quadruplet, and the treasurer retains a copy, and then three copies are brought to the auditor, one copy is transmitted to the State Board of Accounts, one copy is presented to the Board of Commissioners at their next regular meeting, and then one copy is put in the record of the Board of Finance, which I don't even know if you've been, if you've met, the Board of Finance has met, it's supposed to be in January. My other recommendation is to receipt two-year-old outstanding checks back to the funds. And I haven't, I didn't necessarily, on those checks, I didn't know what funds they came from, probably the bulk of them from County General, but they are, clearly states on a county's check that it's void two years after date of issue, so they can't be cashed. So, what you need to do, and I did that as a practice in my office, and that is, receipt those back into the funds from which they came. So, that's got, that has twofold benefit. It increases the fund balance in those funds, and it also reduces the outstanding checklist. I would suggest closing the older US Bank checking account and transfer the remaining cash to the newer checking account. The other thing I thought of on the way in, and I've thought of it off and on, and I will discuss this with Lavanda, and that is, I really think it would be easier for the county if they had a separate bank account for BNB deposits, because they're pretty, there, you may have three deposits a day from the BNB that go in, and then it would make it easier to isolate that, then you could check that back to your, to your fund, you know, going forward to your, not your fund balance, but to what you're carrying on the book. And I just think, and I don't know whether other counties do that, maybe consult with other counties and see what their practice is. When I left office in 2010, it was just starting to ramp up a little bit, but now it's, we've gotten, it's just really, really exploded with a lot of, a lot of deposits to, you know, from the BMVs into that. And moving forward, the date of the contract expires on the 20th. Lavanda is, I haven't worked with Lavanda yet, she is out of, she will be out of the office, I think Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week to Treasurer's Conference. And then next week, my husband's having surgery, so I won't be able to meet with her then. And we, Jane has suggested maybe while the State Board of Accounts will be over at the city, she said they're due, I don't know when they've started a city audit, or will be.
They've already started.
That maybe we could lasso someone from there, bring them over, review these findings, and the ones that we're not 100% sure how to, how to remedy, then they will give us some, some instruction going forward. I will freely share my monthly reconciliation that brings it up to 2016, because she will need this going, going forward, because it has all of the, it has all of the pluses and minuses you have to do to get it into balance, all of these things that I've identified. So, I will share those. I also did the monthly cashbook summary that I've been doing, that has been invaluable in doing this. I will also share that with her going forward, because she's gonna need that to work on 2017. And then I want to work with the treasurer. I understand that they, that you guys, since that's the beginning of her time, then she'll be working on the reconciliations of that, but I would like to work with her a little bit and show her the techniques I've found, so that this doesn't, so that the work here gets carried forward. And my, the other thing I would like to say is, Lavanda came in at a distinct disadvantage, because she came in not being really able to do the job that, one of the things she was, she's supposed to do per code, is she is supposed to reconcile monthly. She couldn't reconcile monthly, and I think it would be asking a lot to expect them to go back six years and do what's been done so far with this. So, but I say, we get off to a fresh start, we get this all reconciled. I would like to work with her to get started and show her some of the things that, tips and tricks that I've come up with while going through this. I'm estimating the time to complete that as maybe 50 hours. We haven't talked to State Board of Accounts yet, and the contract ends on the 20th of this month. I, I don't, I'm proposing perhaps if you would, if you would allow that, to extend the term of the contract out till the 30th of September. And we've made the bulk of it, I have been in touch with State Board of Accounts early on, and they even have it on their website, that, and that really is, this really doesn't have anything to do with the Correction Action Plan. So, basically, as, and I don't know what they want submitted to them, I really haven't seen that. So, once we can submit that to them, then we're square with the state. We just need to worry about going forward. So, if you would, if you would allow, I prepared an addendum to the consulting agreement, if you, if you want to go forward and allow me to work with Lavanda for a bit, I estimated that at maybe 50 hours. And then, you know, if we can get her through one, at least, you know, a few months of the, two, maybe a couple months of bank reconciliation, and then work with her on doing the monthly, the financial report that is required. But that is totally up to you. I have come in on the low end, I submitted my bill last month, and I got a little more that I've incurred so far, but I'm still way at the low end of the spectrum, barely over what the, what the minimum for the contract was. Let me say, I'm pleasantly surprised about that, because I was not sure going in how long it would take. So, if you want to, if you wanna look at this, and, you know, you could do this at your next meeting, because I don't really see, based on Lavanda's schedule and my schedule, that anything is really going to change. I put in here estimated time to complete is 50 hours, time over 50 hours would be at the request of the treasurer and subject to the approval of the county commissioners. So, I want you to look at that, and you don't have to do anything on this today, I can give a copy to the attorney, too. And I think that just about does it. Do you have any questions for me?
Debbie?
Yeah.
The number that you come up with in your summary, the $39,000 some odd dollars, does that match the discrepancy in the State Board of Accounts?
Their last, their last audit report identified, identified $37,000. Some of that may be actually due, because they were probably, they probably took the last day of the cashbook, took the bank statement, laid it side by side, plugged in outstanding deposits and outstanding checks. Then there was an error in those outstanding checks, it didn't have the right amount. So, that may be the discrepancy. I did, when I talked to Lori, is it Rogers, at State Board of Accounts, early in the process, I asked her, I said, I explained to her how I was gonna do it, that I was gonna go basically through every day's work, and I said, "Do I have to match exactly what you found?" And she basically said, "No." Well, she basically said, "You find what you find a balance, and that's what this is." Now, I didn't, you know, I didn't review settlement and those things. Settlement is approved, every settlement is sent to and approved by the state, the state auditor's office, so I didn't, I just mainly looked at cash in and cash out at the checking account.
Okay, so, we're...
And the savings account, investment accounts.
Lavanda is ready, the books are ready as far as the reconciliation?
She has been keeping them up, every, she's been doing a daily cashbook.
But the reconciliations are up to January 2017?
At 17, correct.
So, then she can catch up?
Right.
Her year and a half?
Right.
And will be caught up on reconciliation?
Yeah, I'm sure that would be a big way to go for...
That statute, that statute will be caught up.
Yeah. Now, you're still going to probably have findings, because I don't think they've audited for '16 yet. Last that the State Board of Accounts audited was '15. So, when you go into '16, then when they audit that, they're gonna find the same things, you know? And that may be why we're different, too, the $39,000 versus...
There may have been some in '16.
I mean, I went for the '16, so at the end of '15, that would have been a different number.
Right, right, okay. All right. I greatly appreciate it, Debbie, and yes, you got through it a lot quicker than I was expecting.
I have, I have enjoyed, I really have enjoyed doing it. This is what I like to do, so it's kind of been a jigsaw puzzle, like I told, like I told Leota, it's been like trying to put a jigsaw puzzle together, and I think I'm getting the last piece in place, so.
Well, all I can do is say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I've sent you several emails every time you send in voice.
Yeah, she has been very positive, yeah.
I really appreciate what you've done, and it's a super job, and it was a big one, and it's a big load off our minds.
Yeah.
To have it this close to being completed, and appreciate what you've done with Lavanda and helping her.
Yeah, I kinda have it, yeah. We've kinda chit-chatted on the phone and had emails back and forth, but I, if you, if you'll go ahead and, I mean, if you're able to, like I said, no rush, approve that, you know, it would be at the rate that was included in the contract, in the prior contract. But I'm thinking, but that's an estimate, you know how that is, but yeah. I'm hoping, I think it just depends on how the first month or so goes, so.
Very good. We'll look forward to continue working with you, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie. I would move that we address this addendum at our next meeting.
Yes.
After our attorney has looked through it, make sure it matches the original, it goes along with the original, and then we can address it next.
Oh, second meeting.
Then move to the second to address this addendum at the next meeting, since they're not gonna be able to do anything between now, between vacations and surgeries and all this other things that are going on, anyway. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you again, Debbie.
Mr. McDaniel?
I apologize for being late. I just, you know, I mean, just crisis management at times. But the request I have is for doing those two weeks, plus two days before my vacation and two days after, for, you know, maximum four hours a day for Mr. Crawford to sign a contract to do inspections and the, and minor, you know, permits such as pole bars, additions, things along those lines. Mr. Crawford, he's experienced with this, he's done this, it's been several years, but that's the idea with the two days before I leave for vacation, is to, if there's any changes, things have been... things administratively or anything else that, you know, to get back up to speed, that would give him the time to do that. Two days after my vacation is that I suspect I'll have a, I'll probably have a stack of things that I have to catch up on, whether it's going to might be, whether there's going to be more permits, messaging a lot of questions about potential projects that, so hopefully in two days I can pretty well have everything caught up on. And it's be limited to the afternoons for Mr. Crawford because he does, he works in the morning with doing the deliveries for the breakfast and the lunch for the school corporation. And so, you know, that right there is that, so I think then, but as I said, that all the various inspections we do, the ones I'm, I find particularly critical with Mr. Crawford is also his background, I mean, it's between what he used to do and then also, he also used to do electrical work also, those are the big ones I'm concerned with because those are some of the most critical ones we get is when someone wants to get their electric turned back on. And then also is when someone's doing electric upgrades, we can get them, get that project going and then get the electric going back up. The primary ones that Mr. Crawford would not do as far as any inspections would be, say, class one projects, which would be, you know, commercial remodels, new projects, anything along those lines. Say, if he really wanted to feel comfortable with that, or new single-family dwelling or a major addition to a dwelling. And those things can certainly wait two weeks for issue of permit. And I, as you can see on the letter, is that there's about $2,600 that by the end of August, there is additional funds that have not been spent for the board members that were actually budgeted. And we anticipate with, you know, those, you know, those 14 days for Mr. Crawford, the maximum amount would be about, oh, I think it's what about between $1,100 and $1,200. And then I think with that, if the Commissioners would consider that, is then the, I think the timing then for how to then, you know, transfer the money, whether it be before I leave or whether it be something that would be done is once the claim was submitted for Mr. Crawford's work. And I think that, is that where just the exact amount would be transferred? And something similar was done the year when we were short the, oh, was it about, was about two or three years ago when we were short the payday that was budgeted? Because as, you know, money went into something similar like that, going from, you know, all sorts of different line items into cover the additional pay, not just myself, whether he used to help take care of additional pay for various county employees. So I know something like this has been done since I got, the Commissioner would like to do that. We have had two contracts that have been signed with someone. First one, Mr. Bob Field, that was after I blew my knee out, that was almost six months worth, actually it was about five months before I was cleared to go back to work. Then it was two years ago is when I had my hernia surgery and that was about six weeks and that was, you know, Mr. Bryce Eklund. And so, you know, and their work was just strictly limited to doing inspections.
Bill, you, if I read this correctly, you're willing to enter into a set 56-hour contract for?
Yeah, maximum 56 hours. Yep.
Maximum?
Yep.
Jane, can we do the budget reduction and the budget increase to cover that through internal means or do we need to go through the council?
It would have to be advertised and go through council and then go through DLGF.
So then that'd have to...
We can do it.
The soonest we could probably do it then is the September meeting, council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I would move that we allow Bill to enter into a contract with this Mr. Crawford for a maximum of 56 hours at the $20 an hour rate and that he, we make the proper transfers of funds from his budget to our contractual service budget to cover the expense.
And what I can do is I'll use the, okay, look through my records, if not, you know, both of those are in the auditor's records, been contracts initially signed. So what I'll do is I'll see if I can find those and I'll use that as the template because it'll just be the inspections plus the additional responsibility.
Cost to that?
Yes. More than that.
Okay.
Been moved in second to approve for this request from Mr. McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes. I appreciate it. We're relaxing vacation this way.
I appreciate you being able to get the dollar numbers to work within the budget.
I figure as only reasonable is that I have the money, you know, the Commissioners in the past have been kind enough to, kind of a, sort of an emergency response, we're still kind enough to contract for those services, building inspection services. So once again, I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Do we need to call the call? Have you done any come down on this one, 44?
Ten's lost.
Ten's lost, okay.
Yeah, my council starts in three minutes, as does your executive session.
Okay. Approval of claims to payroll?
I'll move to approve. Put Mr. McDaniel second.
Been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Motion to adjourn.
Next one.
No sign for Lori yet, this time.
Oh, it's just, just your signature. Your time is on, any day.
I...
Will you get two? I mean, I have my copy and I'll send this to Steve. Okay. I'll send this to Steve. Yeah, send me back the copy. Thank you.
All we have?
Sure. I think so.
Do we have any other contracts that need signing?
We signed warrants earlier.
I didn't, I just...
Wait a minute. We need to exchange? Do we need to re-sign it? The new copy?
Yes.
But it's already been?
We approved it at the last committee, yeah. Yeah. It was just a clean up.
I'll move to Jim.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.